All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners, check in. It's Wednesday, February twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. It's one oh four P M. My name is Time Answer, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Commissioner Fornier, Commissioner Grant Zoom, Commissioner Mejia to my left, and Commissioner Klaus, County Manager Leonard Hernandez. And we have virtual public attendance on our Thurston County YouTube channel. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and will be distributed to the Board of County Commissioners in that instance. Action may be taken at this meeting. Agenda, item one is report on external boards and commissions. Anyone want to start? Commissioner Fornier? Anything to report on the boards?
Yeah, the only, the only report that I really have to give is that the LTAC Committee completed its, its mission and will have recommendations coming to the Board of County Commissioners soon for twenty twenty-five funding. And they, they did a great job, so I, I look forward to you guys hearing the whole report and the Commission did a great job, so thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Commissioner Fornier, does that include the new funding that?
That won't be until next year. We haven't, we don't bring in any of that revenue and that's not budgeted into the LTAC allotments until twenty twenty-six.
Thank you.
Commissioner Grant, I saw you shake your head. Any, did you, did you want to report on any?
Well, no, I mean, I don't have all my things here with me, but, but I do want it. I will say that we had, I went to the Nisqually River Council and, um, meeting and it was really, uh, really great. It had a, you know, I just, I'll end up sharing a little bit about that, but it was really neat. They, um, actually gave us a picture of what the potential new overpass or road will look like, um, you know, down the road when they have, instead of, um, you know, it like they had a, a developer had made this sketch of what potentially will be the expansion of the Nisqually project. So that was pretty neat and it's not, it will go up over the top of train tracks and, you know, instead of down. So anyway, it was just really neat to kind of listen in here how the tribes and everyone have been working on this and, and and all the other work going on there. So that's all I have.
Cool. I think I snagged alternate on that. If you ever can't go, let me know because I always, that's a really good group to check in with. Happy to cover you if you ever need it. Let's go to Commissioner Klaus.
I don't have any board updates.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mejia.
Uh, thank you. Um, well, I've been just testifying on a couple of bills with, uh, Legislative Steering Committee with WASAC. We had a, a meeting on the twentieth. Once, so right now we went through the, the budget and so a lot of bills have, uh, the budget cut off, so a lot of bills died. Uh, and, uh, once I get the full report out from WASAC, um, I'll be asking for an item to be added on the agenda just so that, uh, that way we can, I can report out some of the items that we were looking at, uh, that have died. Let's see, um, attended a community meeting. This is not, um, a committee meeting, but, uh, just wanted to let everyone know that I attended the Boston Harbor Association Annual Meeting and, uh, this is for the community as well. They will not be hosting fireworks at the Boston Harbor Marina this July fourth. So they have asked for that word to be spread out that there is no fireworks this year. So, um, attended inner-city transit authority meeting. Um, I just want to report that negotiations are still ongoing. Um, so if you hear from, from any members, uh, or would like more information, uh, please let me know. Um, and thank you so much, Commissioner Mentor, for covering the meeting for me on the fifth. And, uh, let's see. Other than that, uh, attended the National Association of Hispanic County Officials, um, the BHA SO, um, yeah.
Okay. I got a question. On your Boston Harbor, um, fireworks?
Yes.
Is that a budget issue or because community is not happy about the fireworks, you know, noise or something like that or?
It's a little bit of everything. There was, um, they received, I think there were five hundred boats that came out this year and they just don't have the capacity or infrastructure to be able to hold that many people. And, uh, you know, it started out as something for Boston Harbor community and then now it, over the years, it's expanded to all of Thurston County and so a lot of Thurston County residents go and, and so this year just for insurance purposes and cost, uh, the community decided not to hold, uh, the fireworks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, from my report, um, not sure if you guys are tracking it all, but with the Building Code Council, um, it's kind of interesting that, um, a couple, three things are happening. So two lawsuits were dismissed, um, which was good news for us. One of them I was personally named in, um, a federal lawsuit, um, and the federal court basically determined on a jurisdictional basis, they could try, I think they could try to revive it in state court, but the, um, the argument was kind of like the Building Code Council passes the code, we don't enforce the code and that distinction put, took it out of federal jurisdiction under, uh, and under this law called EPC, so we just got that ruling this morning. So that's good news. That's a pretty big lawsuit that's now gone. The other big lawsuit that you probably have heard about is, you know, the voters passed twen- twenty sixty, I twenty-two sixty-six, which related in some part to natural gas and the initiative was not clear. It's being challenged in court about whether or not it violated the same subject rule and all of that, but it was too vague. But one of the vaguenesses was that the building industry thought that it's, it required the Building Code Council to go back and basically immediately redo old existing code to, 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 um, make it non-prejudicial to natural gas. There's an argument it doesn't prejudice natural gas anyway, but, but, but the question before the court was, did I sixty-six by its terms require us to, to pivot immediately and redo old existing code and it's versus an argument that whatever we have to do is a going-forward thing. And whatever we're not allowed to do is something we can't do when we pass new code, but kind of like a retroactivity argument you'd see in a, in a, in a criminal justice context. And the court said, no, it did not, as I understand it, I didn't read the ruling, but I got an email about it. The rule, the ruling was that we do not need to immediately pivot back and reopen old codes based on the language of I twenty sixty-six. So two favorable rulings there. We intend to study, uh, what the meaning of I twenty sixty-six is, so assuming it survives the constitutional challenge, we are in the process of studying it and figuring out how we incorporate its requirements into any new code that SBCC would, would bring forward. So that feels like the right approach to me and that's where the majority of the council has, has, that's the trajectory we're on. So hopefully that's good. And then there's one other thing with Building Code Council. There is a new law that I don't know the status of it, but it would add some seats to the Building Code Council and it would, the, the seat that I hold, there are two county seats and I thought it was, I thought it was explicitly western counties and eastern counties, but apparently that's just kind of the way WASAC has divvied it up and the governor's kind of accepted. It's not in the law. It's just two county officials. So right now I'm one of two county officials and unofficially I'm the western side guy. Uh, we have an eastern guy. Um, the new law changes it to, it, it gets rid of the whole east-west thing and goes more into big counties and littler counties. And their line is three hundred thousand. So if that law passes, it would still work out because obviously Thurston County is at three oh seven according to OFM and I could, I could be up to the governor, I guess, but I could continue to serve as a big county rep. And then the other guy from Eastern Washington, Tom Handy, could be the small counties rep. So at first they thought it was going to kick me off because people, as the Building Code Council didn't know that Thurston County, because if you look at the last census, we're at two ninety-five from twenty twenty, but then OFM does this projection every year and we've been ticking up quickly since twenty twenty and we're, our, our last projection was three oh seven. And I think that's an official, that's the official number, like for example, that we were able to go to the voters on the five commissioners. So I think that's an official enough number that I would count for big counties. Uh, but at first they were like, oh my God, we're going to lose me probably, but anyway. So I don't know if that bill's even going to pass, but I, apparently it had gotten through the first.
What's the bill number?
Uh, I want to s- I'm not sure. I could find, I'll find out at the end of this meeting.
Yeah, let me know.
It'll be in my notes. Those are the only real, uh, updates I have. Uh, you know, I've been doing a lot. I did meet with the, um, I did meet with the, um, Commissioner Public Lands. Kind of, I was in, I was sort of not representing the board per se. I was there, uh, some of the advocates and workers that, uh, community groups that have worked up, you know, alternative plans that we referenced in our October first letter. They set up a meeting and sort of invited me as a courtesy to kind of answer questions. So I was there to kind of answer questions from the Commissioner about Thurston County's, you know, the history of what we've done with respect to this alternative management plan and they wanted me to give. So kind of, I started the meeting by giving a history. I just basically printed all the letters that the board sent to DNR and just kind of walked Dave up the Grove, the new commissioner, through the history of the letters that we sent. So he knows how hard Thurston County has worked on this and how many times we've tried to get DNR's ear and how we, you know, really weren't successful. Um, so, and then the rest of it, I was really just listening.
Do you want to tell them, uh, that he visited, uh,
He was-
His first visit was in the best district?
He, his, he was fresh from a visit to Boston Harbor and Burford Park where there apparently there's a bunch of old tires from some old construction thing that are degenerating and DNR is, Commissioner Mejia told me that there's been requests for DNR to clean that up and the old commissioner, I guess, or DNR wasn't really taking any action, but apparently the new commissioner is because he was out there personally visiting that morning. So that's it's good. I told him Commissioner Mejia would be very excited to hear that. I didn't even realize how much that you'd been involved, so that's cool. Yeah, it was a good meeting. He asked good questions and like I say, we'd never had a meeting with the former Commissioner of Public Lands, so it was welcome to be able to explain to him face-to-face kind of what our concerns are and what our proposals are for the future. So anyway, that was, that's my report. And we'll go to item two, which is a, a series of Commissioner items. Item one is Executive Aid, Commissioner District Five.
Thank you so much. In response to Commissioner's direction, I would say now maybe two, three weeks ago, he sent out the recommended training and also a memo from Maria to the Commissioners. And Commissioner Klaus asked for this item to be added on the agenda, so I'll refer to her if she has anything she'd like to say.
Yeah, thank you, County Manager. I'm just pulling up my email so that when we reference emails, I can have them in front of me. Um, I did print out some, uh, documents for the board and Amy was kind enough to print the training hours for me and I can give you one, Maria, too. Um, here you go. Is the information also available for Commissioner Grant and Commissioner Fornier?
This is information Commissioner Klaus was, um,
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. Um, so I provided this spreadsheet, the training spreadsheet that's attached here to all the Commissioners, um, a few weeks ago and it's a link to the actual OneDrive document so that Commissioners can check it whenever they want and I update it every time I take a new training. So, um, this is the printed copy from today that Amy, um, printed for me. And Commissioners Grant and Fornier have access to the training, uh, sheet. The other sheet attaches a memorandum, which is just my thoughts in response to the proposal and this was completed today, so it hasn't been distributed to Commissioner Fornier. I can send that now.
Can I get a copy too?
Oh yeah, for sure. Does this have to be made available to the public as well? It is a now a public record and it can be requested by the member. Yeah, that's no problem. Um, this was just my thoughts and I was going to share them anyways, but I thought it would be better to have something that the board could look at, um, while I'm sharing that information. So, um, I guess I'll start by just saying, um, I appreciate how thorough this process has been. I know our H R director has, Maria has put in a lot of time, um, to helping, you know, follow the board direction, um, and ensure that we're going through a robust process to hire a new executive aide. Um, I've been completing the training plan that was outlined, which, um, fortunately was almost identical to the training plan that I proposed. So I appreciate, um, that being put together and feeling like, you know, I was heard when I put together a training plan, um, prior to the board direction. So that's provided and I've completed a total of, um, fifty, oh wait, yeah, fifty-eight hours of training since, um, December. So if there's any questions about that or any of the specific trainings that I've provided, um, I'm happy to answer any questions and I can open it up to the board if there's any thoughts. Um, I'm ready to move forward with hiring an executive aide, um, and having that position posted and following the recommended, uh, process that Maria sent out a couple of weeks ago with two hiring panels. So if the Commissioners have had a chance to review that document, um, I think that we could give the green light to Maria's proposal and um, yeah, and then I can open it up to Commissioners and I'll send that memorandum to Commissioner Fornier now so he has it.
Okay, um, maybe I'll make a motion and if there's a second, then that can be a basis to discuss, you know, what the board wants to do. I think the motion, I, so I'll state the motion and then I'll just briefly say why. The motion would be to begin the pro- hiring process under the, under the, um, outline of H R and have the, um, start date for any, any higher be no, or no sooner than April second. And that's because based on the matrix I saw, the other than the one training that couldn't be done till the end of June and you said there were surrogates that could be done in the, in the interim, everything else it looked like could, for the most part, could be April first was kind of the end of that first chunk of stuff. So that would give time for her to finish all of the different things that are there. Probably take that much time at this point anyway to get someone and maybe they wouldn't be available for longer than that, but to say that's the earliest they could start. And that kind of sets that piece aside, um, is my thought process. And then the issue of a second supervisor, which I see in the memo, I guess I would, in my motion, I would ask to defer table, whatever the word we want to use, defer. If there was majority of the board that wanted to discuss that further, we would defer that because I would like to hear legal perspective on that issue before we like made a decision about it. But we'd have until April second to decide, to, to, to further look at that. So my motion is start the process, following the lines that the H R has laid out, um, not have a start date before April second and defer decision if, uh, on, or defer discussion with input of legal on a, a dual supervisory structure, which has been proposed.
I'll second that.
Okay, so yeah, motion and second, we can discuss. County Manager.
I think it's a dual supervisory structure. I think it's a, what, um, in, in the memo from Maria is that the aide would be supervised by somebody else, but receive the, um, day-to-day interaction with Commissioner Klaus, not, we, we don't have a situation where there's someone supervised by two people.
Okay, so I- I have a question on just a point of clarification that I'd like to request.
Sure.
Typically you cannot participate in a motion where it's about you. So I don't know that seconding a motion about when it, when it's about yourself is a proper. I mean, I tip- typically if it has anything to do with you, you can't vote, you can't make a second and you can't make the motion.
Uh, not sure on that.
Is there a policy that you can point to or a statute you can point to that lays that out so I can?
Well, then, I, I, if, I, I, I'm, I'm, it, it's a, I'm not a lawyer, but, uh, as far as like board procedures, Roberts Rules of Order, those are things that are tied into legal, uh, frameworks. So I, you know, I would question the ability of anybody to be, be able to make a motion on themselves. Typically you recuse yourself when it's an action that has to do with you and you know, I, I would want, I mean, if that's, if this is going to go based on a motion or a second or a vote where that person's voting on themselves, you know, I would, I would want legal review on that.
If it's a Roberts Rules of Order concern, those rules are readily available online.
And I'm trying to, it is a Roberts Rules issue and I'm looking at it right now.
I was going to say, I just, I just looked it up and, um, I think Commissioner Fornier is right, but, um, I'm willing to amend, say that I second the motion.
Okay, but, okay, so there's a motion and a second, but, um, it's worth clarifying because if this prohibits Commissioner Klaus from voting on the motion and I'm not sure about that. And look, what I'm finding really quickly is that you can nominate yourself for something. If you have a conflict of interest, obviously you should abstain. It says, while Roberts Rules allow for self-voting, some organizations might have additional ethical guidelines regarding on voters, voting on matters with personal interest, but but I'm not sure about Roberts Rules flatly requiring abstention.
I, I just, I, I'd love to point out that this is clearly, it is a matter of personal interest. The, uh, you know, the prudent, a prudent move would to be, would to, would be to recuse yourself and just the fact that if that's not understood, it really points out to me that the training that we have asked is not being, has not been effective.
I don't understand that connection at all, actually. You're talking about Roberts Rules of Order and trainings related to-
Self-interest. The whole point, the whole, I've, I've-
If it's a Roberts Rules of Order question, then I think the training could happen. If you have confusion about Roberts Rules of Order, I don't know, maybe you could find a training about that.
I, I'm not the one confused. I'm talking about you should not be taking a vote when it's in your self-interest, the, the outcome. And the whole, the whole concern about this whole thing is not, i- is the lack of awareness in when self-interest is overlapped with county interest. And you know, the, the need is that, you know, the Commissioner understands when to remove herself or not put the county in these types of situations. So just the continued lack of self-awareness tells me that there's a continued issue.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your opinion and I guess it would be up to the Chair maybe on who can vote if there's, if you need to take time to look that up. But I've voted on matters related to this already and there was never an issue. Do you have an issue with the motion, Commissioner Fornier?
The motion is made in second so we can discuss it, but I had, and I do have an issue with the self-interest voting and that's been alleviated. So the, I think the second would have been improper from you and I do believe that voting on this would be improper.
Would the, who would be the one to answer that at this time? Would it be the clerk of the board? Do you understand Roberts Rules of Order?
Let me just give me, if you just give me a, a minute, I think I'm, I may be zeroing in on
Okay.
the correct rule, but just give me one second. So I think I think you're both right in a weird way. From what I'm, what I'm reading from two different sources is that the the recommendation is if there's a personal or monetary interest not shared by other members, you should not vote, but you cannot be forced to abstain from voting. So you can vote. It's recommended you don't vote. That's how I'm reading what I'm, what I'm seeing right now. And obviously this is not, this is a, this is a fly by the seat of my pants, looking at, at some, some ish, some stuff online. It's not a legal opinion or a definitive opinion.
We would need time to
Yeah.
review that with the clerk and then she'd probably seek guidance from a prosecuting attorney. So I don't know that she's going to have a response.
Well, let's go ahead and discuss the motion. It may pass without Commissioner Klaus's vote being considered. And then if it, if it doesn't, you know, then we can, we can follow up with legal and see if it needs to be brought back for consideration once we have a more complete opinion. So I guess-
That sounds fair. Thank you.
Okay, so let's just, uh, proceed with discussion on the motion. Does anyone like to propose something alternative or?
So what is, um, you know, for me, the, the recommendation from H R in terms of the supervisory piece is an important piece that I think, we need to address. Um, and for me, like I, um, going ahead with hiring without not setting kind of who the direct supervisor is going to be is I, I think needs to be discussed now rather than waiting until after an offer has been made because that leads into the clarification of who this person is going to be directing, you know?
It might matter to the candidate.
Yeah, and so I, I just think that-
I can see that. Commissioner Fornier.
Sorry, I have to step away.
Uh, I, I, I agree with Commissioner Mejia and I'm going to stay consistent. I don't think any thing should, you know, I, I, I want A then B then C. Uh, I want to see that the recommended training from H R is completed and once it's completed, I think that's when, you know, we begin the discussion about what, what the supervision uh, roles should be like. Uh, you know, I would definitely lean towards following H R's recommendations. And, uh, so for me, I don't, I don't think we're there yet. I want to see the training completed if and then I would want to have this discussion.
Commissioner Grant, go ahead.
Um, I am, um, let's see, so I am, uh, just want to mention that, you know, I think that I'm okay going forward with the motion as it is. Um, I also have concerns about the supervision piece that was laid out in the human resources, um, kind of recommendation. I, I just want to make sure that we, um, you know, are clear on, on who that supervisor is going to be. I don't think it should be, I think that all of our E, our executive aides should have consistency and, and, um, and in their supervision. So I just want us to be thinking pretty clearly about that. Um, I, I do know that I've worked really closely with Commissioner Klaus over the last month, you know, to, um, uh, talk about this and to talk about trainings and, um, and so I, I'm comfortable moving forward with the motion.
Okay, um, anything, Commissioner Klaus?
Um, well, I mean, if we're going to move forward with the motion as it is, then, uh, I guess I would ask the next steps. If we're deferring a conversation about a supervisor, what that would look like? How, when we would have that conversation and what that would look like?
Okay, you're saying if Commissioner Mejia's idea were to be taken forward- Okay, you're saying if Commissioner Mejia's idea were to be taken forward, then what would be the timeline for that?
Um, right, I can't remember which what Commissioner Mejia's.
Well, she was saying that she would want to see a decision on supervision prior to a as I understood what you're saying, you want to see a decision made about supervision before we initiated the hiring across panels.
Yeah, but that's not part of your motion, right?
That's not part of my motion.
So I support your motion as is.
Okay. Well, I call for the vote on that motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Without that piece, I can't vote for it, nay.
Okay, so it's it's two two without Commissioner Klaus's vote.
And I again, I would the I believe that there, well, uh, the there's our code of conduct is, uh, well, I'd have to read it, but the county code of conduct speaks to conflict of interest as well. But I there I think there's some language out there that supports the no self-interest.
So I I'm going to say that the I'm just doing the best I can with the kind of lack of complete certainty on this. But I believe that what my understanding of the rules is that this motion passes. But I would ask that it be subject to legal review. And if if prosecuting attorney says that Commissioner's vote Commissioner Klaus's vote cannot count, then we would have to it would it would be null, because it would be a stalemate, and then we would come back and address Commissioner Mejia's concern. But as I understand the rules, she's not barred from voting, and therefore, the motion passes three two. That's my understanding of the rules. But nothing will occur, if it's okay with the with the board, nothing will occur in response to this motion until we have that confirmation from prosecuting attorney's office that that vote is was properly cast, properly counted, I should say.
Yep.
Is that clear to everyone?
That makes sense to me, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Then let's move forward. Um, well, no, we still have the issue of supervisory, because my motion said to defer. The motion that passed deferred discussion about a supervisory structure. And I think Commissioner Mejia's point is actually pretty valid. So I would say that we would need to have that conversation soon as possible so that it didn't get in the way of what candidates for the position might understand the situation to be. So we would want to bring the prosecuting attorney forward. And I'm just if if with concurrence of the board, we have a a follow up session, you know, as soon as we can, to try to further discuss the appropriate supervisory structure for the new position.
What specific legal question are we asking, Chair?
We are asking.
It is it is possible to do what we are what was in Maria's memo, which is.
It is possible based on the, um, based on the classification and the and the way other E A like the way that the the position will get hired under the class job classification, from an employment law context is what I'm looking at, I mean.
Yeah, because we we are the ones that would assign it. I mean, this let me just start, this is just a recommendation based on what is the the best case scenario to minimize risk to the county? In my discussions with Maria, she was putting together, it was obviously because of the context that while this person is of use to Commissioner Klaus, that the appointing authority or the supervise or the the they appoint an authority and thereby the ultimate supervisor is someone else. Um, so that structurally, I don't know that that's a legal question structurally, because that's that's dependent upon where we put this person as far as the the who they report to. That's within our right. It's really more about do the commissioners want? Do they want that to be implemented or not?
Well, Jane may, you know, Jane's probably the person that would be sent to advise us, and if she says there's no problem with that, then that's and that'll lay that'll lay part of my concern to to rest.
Got it.
But I
We'll round up.
I heard I heard it was secondhand that there was maybe some concern in prosecuting attorney's office about the proposal. And I'd just like to hear that with my own ears.
Okay, we've done.
Yeah, so and maybe maybe I'm wrong, maybe I heard that wrong, that's fine.
No problem.
Commissioner Klaus?
Yeah, I just want to add, um, that in my memo, I point out that there's my primary concern is not to have just not have another person available for an executive aide to check in with. My primary concern is clarity for an executive aide if they're coming in, not understanding who to go to for what. This would be a new dynamic that doesn't exist currently. And so I'm concerned that going into it without some sort of policy framework could cause confusion. And we've run into that a number of times with different issues where there's not a policy, and then it causes confusion. So in my memo, that's kind of what I lay out is, you know, if if there's significant time and effort that staff are putting into this, which staff have already put in a largely significant amount of time into this issue. And so continuing to ask staff to put time into this. Um, if we're going to do that, then I think it makes sense to institutionalize this dynamic through a policy. And so that was my primary concern is that in the memorandum presented by H R, there wasn't a clear matrix. It refers to a matrix, um, a dual matrix reporting relationship, where the aide provides daily administrative support to Commissioner Klaus, but a second supervisor is assigned to assist in the supervision of the aide. So that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that's where I got confused, County Manager. It does say right in the memo, second supervisor, which was different than what you described, where you said there's really only one supervisor. And I and I just that's where I got little like I got a little nervous about the how that would work and and how much time and efforts to set that up, and whether it would be clear and whether it would clear legal hurdles.
And who it would be as well. I mean, there's concern around like who would that second supervisor be? Who has who even has capacity to be a second supervisor for an aide? I just have a lot of questions about how this would play out if we didn't have more clarity around it. So I appreciate the decision to defer the discussion if we don't want to have it now, if people want time to kind of digest all the information, because it's been coming in, it's not like it's not all together. There's a memorandum that was sent February third that outlines this recommended tra- training plan and second supervisor idea. And then this training plan that I sent out in a spreadsheet came, and I don't have the date in front of me, but it came after the memo. And then there's this memorandum that I distributed today. So there's all these different pieces of information that have come in at different times. And so if people want time to kind of like put all that together and and digest it and then have a conversation, I think that's a good idea. Because I don't I'm not opposed to the idea of an E A having a second person to go to. I think that that's actually a really good idea. Um, and I think it would be a great idea if all of the E A's had a person they could go to for support if there was ever an issue with the commissioner. Um, but I think that that should be through a policy. I think it would make more sense to have a policy that outlines it clearly. Um, so that's kind of where I'm at with it. I don't think it's a bad idea at all. I just think it needs to be fully baked before we move forward with it. But I don't see, you know, in your motion, that that passed contingent upon a legal opinion. Um, yeah, I I don't see a problem with moving forward with the hiring while we're figuring this out.
Commissioner Fournier?
Yeah, so, you know, I I don't, this is different than E A's having another place to go if they have a difficulty with a commissioner. This is in my from what I understand, this is H R saying, uh, it would be too great of a risk to the county to allow Commissioner Klaus to be the sole supervisor of this E A if you hire one. And it's not fully, this isn't idea isn't fully baked, because it's being floated out there, and it's being recommended to the Board of County Commissioners that we come up with an alternative supervisory structure for this for this E A of Commissioner Klaus if we hire them. And so it's it is very important, as Commissioner Mejia says, that we figure this out before we begin an onboarding process. And we should be doing the the more prudent actions, and we should be following H R's recommendations.
Okay, so well, I mean, I think we're we know where we're at on this. We'll have a follow up discussion on this. Uh, I don't the the process will move forward. We'll have I think we'll have ample time to get this work through before there be a onboarding of a new employee. So I think everything will fit, and appreciate everybody's input on this.
What would that look like? Are we just going to have it on the agenda for a board discussion? Or how exactly are we going to, uh, figure out the details of this?
I I'm requesting, and if anyone, you know, disagrees, I thought saw Commissioner Fournier's thumb go up. I'm committing I'm asking at the first, you know, first available juncture that we can get, uh, employment, uh, counsel to just, um, sit down and, um, yeah, have a discussion about.
I would be expecting a recommendation from the administration, since they'd be the ones conducting this. And that I thought the legal review was on self-interest voting.
That's that's separate. I I also I at the beginning, I said I also wanted some in legal input on the the whole notion of having a a an alternate supervisor, how that's going to fit when there certain E A's are supervised one way and one and how the employee in the class I'm not an employment law specialist. I don't know if that causes any risk to the county or issues having similarly classed people on different supervisory versus, you know, elected officials autonomy and all those different considerations.
Yeah.
I just want to hear that that's that that would be o- okay, you know, be as part of the discussion that we all talk about in terms of whether it's a good idea or not.
Yeah, and I think that that recommendation is like just that. It's not a well dialed in approach. We're not going to spend staff time on something we don't know that the board even wants to do.
Okay.
So if you want us to look at it, we will look at it. If you don't want us to look at it, then we won't look at it. But I'm not going to have cha- staff chasing their tail in hypotheticals. We sent that out, we didn't get any feedback. We met with you, Commissioner Klaus, you said you were open to it. We didn't have this memo in front of us to read. So I'm wanting to just to say we can absolutely do the review, because I I I'm concerned that what we're doing is we're taking Maria's memo and we're weaponizing it. She just put some words on a concept. We do matrix supervision all the time in this county. To say that it's not legally avail- uh, advisable is wrong, but I understand based on the words, like having two supervisors, that is weird. But I can get from where the memo stated that, I understand where folks are at. So I'm just saying that more from an H R standpoint that I don't want which, you know, her putting her concerns down on paper, which is what you want her to do. You want her to advise you on options. It's that it's just that. But we can work with counsel and come back and say, if it's going to work, this is how it would work, so that we we would get over the hurdles.
Quite a bit, I think.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes, sir.
I I'd like to make a mo- I I don't want to put the cart before the horse, and I feel like we're doing that. I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, direct the county manager to work with H R and whoever else appropriate, attorneys, uh, you know, specialists to, uh, come up with recommendations for a supervisory structure as, uh, recommended by H R, and that this needs to be adopted prior to the hiring of anybody.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
I I'm, uh, wondering, isn't that kind of what we're? So I don't know, the motion is a little bit like convoluted to.
So we have a motion in a second.
Right, can you clarify your motion, Commissioner Fournier?
The motion is to direct staff, the county manager, to come up with options for a supervisory structure that follow the recommendations of H R, and that this needs to be done prior to the hiring of this person.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the clarification. So two things, directing staff to come up with options is sort of like what the county manager was saying to not have. And don't let me put words in your mouth, but when I heard you say you don't want staff chasing their tails, this motion is asking staff to come up with options which will take staff time.
No, hold on.
Hold on, sorry, let me finish, Commissioner Fournier.
You're you're taking over the meeting, the chair.
And
Commissioner Fournier.
There's a motion on the floor.
Commissioner Fournier, you're not here in person, but the chair is telling you that I'm still talking.
Let her finish the thought.
So directing staff to come up with options is going to take up staff time when we could have and we already have a motion that we're going to defer this, and the recommendation was to have legal come talk to us about it. I think that having that legal opinion is important prior to having staff time spent on something that the board might not support. I I think that's important. And then I have a question. When you say you want this done prior to the hiring of somebody, um, are you saying you want this done prior to beginning the recruitment process or the finalization of a hire and their start date?
You can't hire somebody when it is not determined what they're how they're going to be supervised, what the job is going to be. You're that you're doing something that is that is, you know, out of order. You can't it would be an improper like, you know, action to take before the hiring takes place. You've got to you've got to set out what that supervision is going to look like, who that person reports to. Otherwise, you're not even you're not even interviewing for a job that exists.
So you're saying that you don't want this recruitment process to start at all? You don't want the job posted?
I never said that.
Well, I'm I'm asking, I'm asking.
You do things in order.
And okay, I'm still not getting the answer to my question, so I'm not sure what the motion is.
There's a little bit of confusion, because honestly, based on the motion that passed, there was only two commissioners interested in a supervisory structure. I was interested in learning more about it, but at this point juncture, I'm not interested in further, um, you know, further going down that that route, so, um.
Without proper direction for staff, staff will be chasing their tail because they don't have direction from the Board of County Commissioners. That was what I heard being said, we don't want. So I'm I'm looking I'm looking for giving proper direction to staff so that we can move forward, and we can do things in an order that's going to get them done. And when you do things in order and properly, they they get done quicker. If you do this all out of order, it's going to end up in another quagmire.
Commissioner Minister, I thought you said you wanted opinion from from legal. I this is basically what gives county manager to go with H R, to come with legal and to come with us and be like, okay, yeah, this is going to work, or no, this is not going to work. This is basically what I take what you wanted, hearing from our legal department on it, but just giving formal direction to the county manager.
Well, I was trying to be honestly, I was trying to be, as I as I tried to do, I was trying to be as open as I could to the ver- variety of opinions that I was hearing amongst board members. I'm not certain, I'm not certain about the alternate supervisory structure myself, but.
Even though it's H R's recommendation?
Yes.
Then when the recommendations come back, we debate that.
Right, but I was I
But until then.
I definitely didn't want anyone to 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 I didn't want anyone to I had heard I I had heard hearsay that the prosecuting attorney had some concern about this approach. So like, I definitely before my seatmate, I don't know where my seatmates are. I haven't talked to Commissioner Grant about this at all. I haven't talked to really anyone about this. I I knew Commissioner Klaus's opinion about it only, um, from her memo. But the I didn't want anyone voting without if there was a legal component that we weren't seeing. And again, because I understood, you know, it this was Maria's kind of thoughts, and it wasn't, you know, anything said in.
It was not in the show.
It was like an idea, and it was a reasonable idea, and frankly, if I didn't know how Commissioner Klaus would react. If she wanted to do this as a expression of community trust kind of thing, like, I think she might want to do things that she's not required to do. And I would fully support, you know, assuming legal said it was okay, I would fully support her saying, yeah, I'd like to do that to show that I'm being super, super, but super, super above board beyond what I need to do. So I I didn't know where this was going to go. But if 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 I'm not sure legal's okay, and I'm and I'm Commissioner Klaus doesn't like it, you know, for whatever reason, and I'm concerned about it, um.
My motion seeks clarification, and it directs the county manager to find that out, give us some options. If there are no viable options, then that's probably what would come back to us. We get to debate it at that time. But until then, it's just an idea in the ether that gets no action, and then we're going to be spinning our wheels, talking about it at the next meeting. And then, you know, and then action's going to be taken to hire an employee, and then we're going to get down the road on that, and then it's going to come up again, and we're going to say, well, we didn't figure that out.
I don't think a lot of chi- I mean, the way I looked at it didn't require a lot of chasing tail, the staff's tail. I mean, legal can come in and say what they think about, and it could be very simple, you're fine to do it this way.
Then my motion is easy.
The let me just finish, and the and and H R, I mean, I think Commissioner Klaus's question about who would the person be would be relevant to my think to my thought process. Is there a proposal there? And that's about it, really. I mean, if and then we could just make him, you know, decide if we're going to do do it that way or not. Um, you know, I mean, just going back to the beginning, like, I've been, you know, I've been all through this process kind of, you know, as you guys know, kind of uncomfortable with not so much what the what the thought process is about what Commissioner Klaus should or shouldn't do, but just me as a board. me as a, a board member, like staying in my lane, so to speak, like what, what is the right thing for me as a board member to, to exercise control over another commissioner's exercising of their job that they're elected to do. So that's, like, I have that kind of concern about, you know, is I, I'd love to, I mean, I, I would want to be really certain that this is us staying within our proper legal lane. Um, on doing something like this when we're not doing it for the other commissioners and stuff like that. So that's why I ask for a little.
I couldn't agree more. And that's why I want this motion to go through so that that can be clarified. Cause I agree with you.
But if the higher.
I want to know the rights and the lefts, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna debate that in a boardroom and get anywhere with that. You get, we're not gonna be able to get prosecutor Turnh- Turnheim to come in and, you know, tell us, you know, the, you know, the, the proper way to go. That's not how anything actually is gonna get accomplished. I want to direct, you know?
Yeah, so this is like five weeks before this person would start and I think that we could have the discussion that I've proposed, um, you know, without having to hold up the panels and the vetting and going through applications and setting up, sit, organizing interview times. That all takes time. And again, when I was worried about where we were at in December and January and, and having more hoops, uh, you know, training hoops, it was about the timeline. Cause government moves slow and this can easily become, three months can easily become six months, can easily become nine months, and that's what I'm concerned about. That's what I'm, that's my concern about your motion. Not so much what you're asking for, but.
Slow for good reason. And, you know, and if you feel, you know, if you feel that this research can be done in a timely manner, then it shouldn't cause a problem. So I, I, you know, I feel like you're kind of making my argument for me, but, you know, I, the, the motion's on the floor.
Well, I, I do want to clarify, Commissioner Klaus tried to, I want to clarify, when you, your motion was before hiring. Your definition of hiring is the initiation of a hiring process or signing of a contract of a employee?
Uh, well, I mean, I, I would leave that, 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 that clarification isn't in my motion, but and I, I think that a, you know, a well-reasoned person would not start a hiring process on a job that isn't clearly defined. A job doesn't even exist, so you can't start the hiring process on a job where you can't put in that, you put out the job description and it doesn't say who your supervisor is. There's a problem.
Okay, so that's where I have concern about the motion. So is there any other discussion on this motion?
I just want to say that I think my motion is the best way to clarify that.
I actually have to get to a training that I self-enrolled in that was not on the list that HR provided, and I'm late to that training, so I'd appreciate if we could.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the Commissioner Fornier's motions, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion fails. Again, subject to, subject to the legal, yeah. Subject to the same, uh, the same review that, that first motion.
So then, we're not gonna get any direction from, um, an employment attorney on the supervisory recommendation that Maria has made, just because that motion has failed, is what I'm hearing?
No.
So, well, that was the motion.
Hold up the mo- we're not gonna hold up.
Well, there's no clear direction to the county manager to seek that direct, like, that's, that was the whole point of the motion was to clear, like, seek that direction from our employment attorney. So is there going to be another motion to seek?
Yeah, I would make, I would make.
I thought that was already included in your motion.
It was not.
No, it wasn't. I'm trying to, I'm trying to clarify.
On the agenda, right? That doesn't have to be a motion.
My motion, hold on. The original motion was begin hiring process along the parameters of HR's recommendations, defer discussion on the hiring process until we could get input, until such time as we can have a further discussion and have input from legal. I think it is covered in my motion that passed. Assuming that motion does pass. That is direction of the majority, three of the county commissioners to set up that discussion and, and I expect at the end of that meeting, we will clarify the supervision structure and I asked for the, and, and in the motion, it was to be as soon as possible.
Because as soon as possible, we cannot hire somebody into a job that isn't clearly defined. So if it's as soon as possible, whatever, but, you know, I, I was trying to put something out there that would make it get done.
Commissioner Klaus?
Um, I just want to clarify, cause you said just now when you repeated your motion that we would defer the hiring process, but the original motion was defer the conversation about the supervisor structure.
The decision about supervisory structure.
Okay, so at this time, if we get a legal opinion saying, yes, I can second that motion, we can go ahead and post the job. Is that right?
Not that you can second the motion, because Commissioner Grant seconded the motion, but that your vote, you could vote.
Okay.
Your vote is a valid vote.
So as soon as we get the okay.
Would begin along the lines, that was the motion and passed.
Yeah, however, you're posting a job that really doesn't even have a proper job description.
I, I, I mean, I think that's an overstatement of the, there isn't, there is one ambiguous element that I, you know, by the time you get panels together and, I mean, I think that we can easily resolve this before there's any candidate selected that could be, and, and before they'd have to make a decision about agreeing to the job terms to where they would know before they signed any contract, what their supervisory structure would look exactly like.
I actually want to bring up that we, we spoke about this when I met with Maria and the county manager on Monday. And I expressed this same thought. What is the job description gonna say? Because it's clearly laid out that the appointing authority is the commissioner and that they serve at the pleasure of the commissioner and it's an at-will position. So we discussed that and talked about how the job description could be tweaked a little bit to not make it so rigid. And I think that that's a conversation I can have with Maria because the hiring process that was laid out that we just approved talks about how, how the job's gonna be posted and every single step of the way, I'm gonna be working with Maria to ensure the process is robust, so.
But in that conversation, Commissioner, you were, you expressed support for this, um, for the recommendation Maria made. And now, I haven't read this, but it sounds like you're not supportive of that.
No, not necessarily. Um, I came into the.
I, I think that's just the difference in where we're left in a conversation coming to this meeting and where this is at. I don't think that's germane. I just don't want it misrepresented that, that, how that conversation went.
Yeah, so I'm gonna clarify because you just said something and then didn't let me respond to it. Um, I came into that meeting saying I'm open-minded to this idea. I think Maria put a lot of thought into what she recommended and I don't want to just toss that aside. I'm not saying at this point that I don't support it. I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying the same thing that I said on Monday when we spoke. That if we're going to go this route, it needs to be very clear. The parameters need to be laid out. And at this point, we haven't seen a matrix. So that's why, you know, we, we had this discussion on Monday. And so I don't want it to be mixed up or miscommunicated or misstated that I don't support Maria's recommendations. I support the recommendations if we can figure out a structure for it. That's where I stand. And if we can't figure out a structure that makes sense, then.
But you also don't, I mean, just to be fair, you also don't want to delay the process of bringing the EA on, so you're kind of at a, in a sense, you are opposing it because you're saying it can't really be done. The, the things that you would need to see to feel comfortable with, it can't be done in this, in time to not delay hiring process. So in a way, you're opposing it. Because.
Well, I guess I would say.
The requirements you're putting on it.
I, I would say, what I oppose is putting forward something that's so vague that we don't understand what we're voting on. And that's kind of what I felt. It was like the county manager said, this is a concept that hasn't been fully baked. And so I was concerned about.
Commissioner Fornier's was, motion was designed to do that. But again, that delays, that delays the process and I, I've been trying to prioritize getting that, you know, moving this forward in a more timely fashion. So there's a tension there.
The clarification that I was seeking earlier, that I thought you, you answered for me when I said, what exactly does that mean to defer the process of this dual supervisor role? And I thought the answer that I got was that we were gonna have a legal person come in and talk to us about how that could look. So that would be where we fully baked the idea.
Well, yeah, and I would, yeah, I was just saying that it was, it was a board, it's a deferred board discussion adding in the element of, of any legal elements that need to be understood. Yeah.
May I?
Yes.
I, eh, we should all know by now that just calling in for a legal opinion does not necessarily get us closer to our goalpost. Sometimes it adds more confusion. It doesn't, they, they, they're not always willing to give legal opinions. So again, my motion was to get us where we need to go. And, you know, whatever that is. You just gotta, you gotta let process take hold. You can't put things in front of you, in front of the other. You know, like I'm hearing, you know, confusion and ambiguity between the very things that Commissioner Klaus is saying. Uh, I'm, you know, Commissioner Menzger, I'm hearing, you know, well, you know, it's kind of back and forth. That just speaks volumes to the fact that this is not fully baked. It needs to be fully baked before we start going out to people, you know, out in the world and making offers. And, you know, making, you know, asking them to uproot their lives and trust us and come work at the county. We, we, we can't do that yet because we haven't fully baked this concept. We've got recommendations from HR that I take, just like recommendations from an attorney. You, you gotta follow them. They're saying, hey, there's, there's risk here that needs to be mitigated. Please, listen. You know, this needs to be figured out in a, in a timely manner, but it needs to be figured out in an orderly manner, or we're gonna end up with more problems and we're, we're gonna end up with another big lawsuit.
I don't totally disagree with you. I just, I know I've gone through the proring process twice and I, I don't think it can be, and especially with the additional steps that we're building into it through HR, which are appropriate. I don't see, I don't think it can be done in less than a month and probably, and maybe longer. So, like, I'm just, my only concern about your motion was the timing of it because I, I would like to get the process started. We're gonna get to a resolution on this one way or the other. Commissioner Klaus is doing a ton of trainings. We're gonna make a decision one way or the other about how the position is supervised, like, it's gonna be decided. So the pro- this month to two-month process of getting the right person selected through multiple interview panels needs to start. That's my concern. And so, you know, that was where I was deviating with your motion. I would like to see, kind of what I'm asking for is exactly really what you're asking for. I'm just not making it locked into, we can't start the process before we do. I want to see exactly what you're saying, Commissioner Fornier, but I, I don't want to lock it into saying we can't start this process.
And, and I think even if I didn't put that in my motion, it's still, just by the nature of getting this all figured out, it would have to be that way anyways. I think it's like, it's, it, it's an inevitable thing. And so like, you know, you, you, you just, you can't do one before the other. And so, you know, I wanted to make sure that was clear in my motion. I think it'll be clear in the process because you know, people will start tripping over themselves and it's gonna cause problems and anxiety and, you know, miscommunication and, and angst and anger and blowups. So I, I want it, I, you know, my motion was to just clarify it absolutely because I think that's the way it has to go. It's not the way I want it to go. You know, I, I would be, I would like to have a much different conversation. But, you know, I re- I recognize what you're saying. This is gonna happen in some way or another and it's gotta get through it. But we've got to, we've got to guide it through appropriately.
County manager?
I think, Chair, that what we can do is, um, I think all of you have some very valid points. So what we can do, Maria and I, is work on a framework. That then we ask, uh, our attorney to, to review and provide perspective on as an option. Cause if we just ask them for their, what's your opinion on this, they've asked for help to narrow things down, like what, what specifically are you looking for? So I think the, um, compromise here is, based on the motion that you set, um, and the questions that are had there, let us come up with the framework. It's not gonna be detailed out and I disagree that it needs to be a policy. This is not a policy. This is a framework that we say, here's how we do matrix supervision, which the concept of that is, there's a, an appointed, uh, like appointing authority that is the official supervisor. But for workload and workflow, they're assigned to somebody over here. It's what Rob Gelder talked about where he came from in KITSA, where there were two commissioner aides. They reported through the county manager's office, but they supported the three different commissioners. They didn't report to commissioners, but commissioners had a lot to do with their day-to-day workflow. We'll come up with that kind of scenario, sit with legal counsel and see if they have any major concerns about it. And then all come back and present that. So everyone's here for questions. And we can do that as quick as we can get on calendars and schedules. I'm, uh, don't want to jinx anything by saying two weeks.
Yeah, but if you said, if, if two weeks is what we're shooting for, the, the, the EA hiring process won't be anywhere near i- its, its completion at that point. So I think Commissioner Fornier's vision will be realized. As he, as he said, he was right about that. I think it's just a matter of whether we, you know, hold things up for another couple, three weeks or not.
Yeah, and we can, to, to Commissioner Klaus's, um, comment, which I think is a good one, we can have some on the initial, um, recruitment, this position reports to the commissioner's office. And then if it's, the board decides we want the port to you, then we just firm that up as the process goes through.
Right, yeah, that makes sense.
I think we have, we have the opportunity, if that's the will of the board, we can go that approach. And I think it satisfies what people are looking for.
Okay, so do you have, is the, the motion that's passed give the back direction or do you need something further from the board?
Just a thought, I mean, if, if, if what I outlined is, is, uh, appropriate, I want to make sure that we're, we're meeting what all of you want. Um, or a majority of you want, then go ahead and just give me the direction and do that and we'll carry it through. Obviously, it would be best in a motion as Commissioner Fornier mentioned. Uh, because it is on the agenda for action. Uh, and then it gives staff the, the ability to say, no, we're doing this on behalf of the board.
So the motion would be to formally direct staff to prepare a proposed matrix, have it, eh, through legal review and bring it forward two weeks or as, or soon thereafter as practicable for board decision.
Yes.
Meanwhile, the, if, the, 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 the mechanics of the hiring process move forward immediately.
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
So, um, any discussion on that motion? This kind of a variant of Commissioner Fornier's.
I'm still here.
Okay. Uh, call for the vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Two abstentions?
I'm abstaining, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know. I just want to point out, again, the self-interest clause would make this vote invalid. So there's three that are pending on this, uh.
So it passes 2-0, but again, Commissioner Fornier is correct that Commissioner Klaus's vote, uh, we need to review that through legal.
Did Commissioner Fornier vote? I didn't.
I took it as an extent, extension, or are we voting nay, Commissioner Fornier, or, or aye?
I'm, I'm just, I'm wrestling with all of this, just the, the fact that I ha- we have to talk about, you, you shouldn't be voting in your own self-interest, just, eh, it's just not sitting well with me and I, I'm, I, I, I guess I will abstain.
So 2-0, but which passes, cause of a, oh, right? No, it doesn't.
Oh, we only have four commissioners present.
No, it does pass. The majority of the, of the, of the commissioners present. So it passes, but.
If it's, if I'm tracking correctly, if it's two,
Yes.
Yes, two yay, two abstentions. And if technically only one of those yes votes is valid, then it does still pass.
That's what Travis said, right? It's a majority of the votes cast by the people who, uh, based on the quorum that's present. Well, anyway, either way, we've got, we can add that to the list of the the new today's three votes with prosecuting attorney to weigh in on whether or not Commissioners Klaus's votes are valid.
Got it.
Counted. This one may pass regardless, cause it would be 1-0 without your vote. But it, it, it can be, it can be reported back to the board on that by email.
Yeah, we'll report back to the board on all those motions and getting legal review. I think this kind of uh, uh, undergirds the continued work we get, we need to make on the bylaws, just so some of this stuff is clear.
Yeah.
Thanks so much.
Next up is letter of support, Connections Health Solution Crisis Care Facility.
Thank you. Yeah, I have to head out. Sorry, Commissioner Meehan. I want to say I support the letter. I read it and I reviewed it. I think it's great and I have to go to the training.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Still have a quorum, so go ahead, Commissioner Meehan.
Thank you. Uh, so this is in regards to the, um, a letter. It was on the Commissioner Items Agenda last week. However, the meeting got canceled. Um, and, uh, therefore there wasn't enough time for it to be open for public input. Um, and so, uh, me and Commissioner Grant did sign on to the letter and did send it in, uh, however, wanting to bring it back to see if there is board support for, uh, this. Uh, this is, I will clarify, this is not signing us up for anything. This is simply to support an organization that is seeking funding from a state agency. Um, to see if, uh, you know, they can open a center here in Thurston County. Uh, but this is not, I guess tying us to it. It's just simply a letter of support for them to go for that, to seek that funding.
I had a couple of questions. Um, I think I'm in support, but, um, Connections is not a group I'm familiar with. I was wondering, is this one where like you and Commissioner Grant had like visited? And what, what can you tell me about them?
So they are originally a group from Arizona, right? And they. So they are originally a group from Arizona, right, and they have opened, uh, their first facility here in Washington State and Kirkland, and it is a facility. They are also working on opening up a facility in Snohomish County, and they're also looking at Thurston County, um, for another one. Um, basically, what they would be doing here would be that walk-in, uh, services, so they do, um, so basically, where people are going into the ER for a behavioral health challenge, right, uh, and then they're having, you know, to wait in the ER for hours on end until they're attended. So this would give basically people another option, uh, instead of the ER department, um, and it allows that walk-in access, uh, and then, of course, the emergency, uh, services drop off, uh, which I think is very important. Um, Providence did attend that tour with us as well, and they were also very interested in the Connections model, just based on the fact that, um, there is not, they don't have the capacity to handle this, um, and this would allow for another, uh, for another place for people to go. Um, I think that what they're looking at is 16 beds, um, so it, it isn't on this large scale, but it is something that provides just an alternate.
And they need money, uh, and like, is there a certain bucket of money that's new, or they, like, how are they, how are they going to tap into state?
So this is, yeah, so this is not a new bucket of money. It's just, there have to be specific, uh, requirements. One of them is the requirement of support from the BHASO, so, uh, Joe did tell us that three, uh, three different groups reached out to him, Connections being one, and there were two others, but they didn't quite meet the, um, the, the requirements that, you know, that the BHASO has to kind of like say, like, yeah, we would support, uh, or no, we would not support.
So the BHASO selected these-
Connections, yeah.
Okay.
So Connections, uh, you know, the BHASO saw the three, talked to the three, and just based on that, um, Connections was the one who would fit.
Okay, um, I'm, I'm satisfied with that. Commissioner Fornier, any questions?
Uh, not necessarily any questions. I, I, I'm supportive, uh, in, in general. I've talked to Commissioner Grant about it, and it sounds, sounds like a, a, a great opportunity if it, if it plays out the way that, you know, we've been told about it. Um, you know, I just would want it to be clear, you know, what exactly, if any responsibilities, you know, are going to be put on staff, what expectations, expectations and roles our staff's going to be in, because I know that there was some, you know, that wasn't exactly clear. My understanding is that this is a, this is purely a BHASO initiative and operation, and we're cheerleading.
We've needed this for a while. I think Commissioner Grant pointed out, and, or, Commissioner here, but like, we, this is what we were trying to do when we had the facility next to the jail, and it got morphed into something different, and it never really fulfilled that promise, so, um, take two. Sometimes it takes a second shot, fight at the apple, to get what, what, what you really need, so that's exciting.
Yeah, and so this is-
Yeah, we still have that place next to the jail, right?
We do, but-
Is this not being run the way we envisioned, and is that something-
Yeah, it got clogged up with, like, we didn't have total control over it, and Telecare was running it, and it got long term, people got placed there, like, for long term placements. It was never like an in and out crisis stabilization and then move out. It was like people would come in, they wouldn't, they'd be there for extended periods of time, and, and it just never, and then, and then it really just wasn't, and then the econ, and then the economics, you know, the economics are tricky of, of having a true crisis, in and out crisis stabilization center, and it got off on a different economic model, and it, it just became something else. Not something bad or anything, just not what we were originally trying to create.
I understand. I, I always wonder if there's like, still missed opportunities there to be worked on as well.
Wayne was working on something, Wayne Graham with the, Wayne, the other Wayne, Wayne Graham at the prosecutor's office was working on a, a concept that we got a little bit of headway with, with the state, to try to, um, be able to bring people over from the jail and forensic, um, examinations, which wouldn't be exactly what this is, but it would have been something more useful than what was happening, and the state kind of went a certain part of the way with us, but then couldn't get, like, couldn't get it to the finish line. So, there's been definitely, there's definitely still conversations I think we can have over time about that. But, okay, so do we need a motion? I'll make a motion to, uh, support this, um, to sign off on this letter of support.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Great, we'll apply, uh, electronic signatures, uh, of the board and get that over to Joe Alas.
Thank you so much.
Right, thank you, Commissioner. Um, item number, next item is FIFA World Cup.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, this is just a report out that we met with the mayors from, uh, Tomwater, Lacey, and Olympia, and the city managers at the, um, I think it's a big two month mayor county meeting, and we, we've talked about the need for us to start a work group as soon as possible on this topic, and they were supportive, so wanted just to touch base here, make sure the full board was aware of that, and, uh, the clerk will, uh, send something out to get a designate from, uh, the three cities, but also will be working with the EDC and the Chamber of Commerce, uh, and Experience Olympia and beyond, so that we can put together a work group and start to map out what our plan and approach is going to be. Also want to thank Commissioner Mahia, who, uh, has come up with the, uh, framework for how to get started on this, and we will be sending that out to, uh, the city representatives and our partners, other stakeholders as well.
Is the thought that the work group would include staff members, elected officials, like, what's, was that discussed, like, the composition of the work group?
Yeah, it's a good, good question. We didn't discuss the composition, where we're leaving it up to each jurisdiction to assign somebody, but I think it needs to be staff and elected official participation, so that they can be reporting back to their respective, um, boards and, and commission on where we are going and headed. Ultimately, this is going to take a lot of collaboration, and we don't want to wait too much longer. Other counties have already started their planning and coming on board with, uh, different, um, proposed marketing, and we want to be right there with them, so that folks take full advantage of the whole region's approach to, uh, these wonderful, this is a wonderful opportunity.
Any questions for the county manager? Nope, all right, thank you. Last item, uh, on the agenda is 2025 meeting schedule. We have a attachment in our packets.
Yes. Um, Amy, do you want to cover this item?
This is on behalf of Commissioner Grant, who has requested that the board work session on the second Wednesday of every month start at 10:00 AM rather than 9:00 AM, so she can attend an advisory board that she is assigned to.
Transportation Policy Board.
Is that the, so, is that the same Wednesday as workup?
I'm not sure. I believe so.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of impossible for us to navigate all the different-
Yeah.
-other boards and committees, but, yeah.
Okay, well, I mean, I didn't know if, so, you're just asking if the board agrees to, for one hour later start on second Wednesdays of the month?
Yes, just that day.
Okay, I, I don't have any problem with that myself.
Since this is a board approved calendar, we're bringing it back to make any changes with the board.
I'm okay with that.
Commissioner Fornier? 10:00 AM on second Wednesdays instead of nine?
Uh, I mean, I, I can go either way. I'll go with whatever the majority wants, I'm good.
It sounds like we've got two to one, two to, two to zero.
Well, he said he would go with whatever the majority wants.
Okay, three to zero.
Three to zero.
All right, so we're good with that?
Yes.
Direction to make that amendment?
Yep.
All right. Any other Commissioner Items?
So just know, I'm, as we're scheduling, we'll, it'll take a couple of, since everything else is nine o'clock, it's just more of a, some folks may be muscle memory to be here at nine. I'll send out reminders.
It won't be muscle memory for me.
I don't want to make it more confusing, but-
It's just one, one of the days. I think we can work it out.
But like, isn't there, is this, oh, yeah, so like, the first Wednesday is new employee orientation at nine, and board work session at 10. Would it kill anyone to move new employee orientation to the second, and we don't lose any time? Just that, just Commissioner Grant couldn't make it, but that, that's, that's never been an issue, like, that every commissioner's at the new employee orientation, especially since we have five. So I mean, if she could sacrifice that-
Like, I'm not like, I'm not hell bent on moving the time. I just, I'll go along whatever, but I like what you're suggesting.
We'd have to ask her if she's willing to forego new employee orientation.
And see if Amy, you know, Solis, if that's something that has to be the first one.
Yeah.
And it's just an idea.
Okay.
Because then you, you wouldn't really lose any time.
Right.
I mean, Rachel would not miss any board business. New employee orientation's always kind of an optional, has always been treated sort of as optional by the commissioners. I mean, I always make a point to make it, but-
Yeah.
It's not as important as, you know, board briefings and stuff, so that might be a way to make it all fit.
Okay.
But that's just an idea.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other Commissioner Items? We're adjourned.